Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone. Before we get started with Commissioners' Court, proceed as we normally do. We have Brother Brent Williams here with us today. If you would, please, sir, lead us in the invocation and Commissioner McCam, the pledges.
Let's pray. Father, we just thank you that we can trust you with all our heart, that we don't have to lean on our own understanding, but that we can talk to you and acknowledge you and that you'll make the path straight. But we also thank you that we don't have to worry about anything, but with prayer and supplication, with Thanksgiving, we can make our requests known to God so that the peace that transcends understanding, that surpasses understanding, will keep our heart and our minds in Christ. So peace is a person, not a principle. So as long as we can keep our eyes fixed on you, we're going to have a great day, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
First, are there any citizens' comments?
No, sir.
No citizens' comments. Item one, consider and take action on minutes from previously held meeting of Commissioners' Court on November 2, 2021. Court, are there any additions, deletions, or comments?
Hearing non-judged, I move we approve the regular session of Commissioners' Court, November 2, 2021, as presented.
Our second is motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tootley, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the minutes of the November 2, 2021 Commissioners' Court meeting as presented. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Now, item number two is a presentation of the Texas Historical Commission for the 2019 and 2020 Distinguished Service Award to the Henderson County Historical Commission. And before I call up the Commissioner and Ms. Brown, I want to state that we have two years' worth here that have been impacted and delayed due to situations at the state and situations with the pandemic. We have two years' worth of distinguished service awards to present, and hopefully, within another six to eight months, there'll be another one coming. This is really something that myself, and I know the court is very proud of, in the fact that year over year, continuing the volunteer work that is put forth by the individuals with the Historical Commission continues to be recognized. There is a tremendous amount of work and time that is put in to projects, just such as what we went through last weekend with the dedication of the Ginger Murkison Historical Marker. These things don't just happen, and it's through the efforts of our commission and our individuals that are appointed that put forth their time and even treasure, to some regards, to make this a successful program. And we really appreciate the efforts of all that are involved in that. And, Court, it is my great honor to ask that Ms. Sheriff Jane Brown, if she would, to please come forward and to present her with these two awards. And again, you're the only one who can say that. Sheriff Jane, you don't ask for a lot, and you don't ever take a spotlight, but you and the others with the Historical Commission, we greatly appreciate you. You and everyone else that's involved puts forth so much effort, and we greatly appreciate your efforts.
Well, we appreciate the Commissioners' Court for supporting us because we couldn't do it without y'all. So I have one, three members here today.
Please introduce them.
I have Les Smith, Gloria Hunter, and Abigail Gibbons.
Court. Any comments?
Thank you for everything you do and put this everything together. Y'all do a wonderful job. I enjoyed the thing for Ms., the ceremony this weekend. It was really good for Ms. Ginger Murkison.
It's really a lovely dedication.
It was really nice.
Thank y'all.
I want to thank y'all for all that y'all do, and if there's anybody in the county that needs to know history and stuff, these people, these are the people to go to. Some, they know a lot more history about your own family and stuff than you do. So if you want to find something out, they can let you know.
Any further comments? Well, again, thank you all very much for your efforts. We truly appreciate it. All right. Item number three, consider and take action to apply for the fiscal year 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. Can we have Ms. Brown here with us?
Good morning. And this funding is provided by the Department of Homeland Security. We're requesting the funding on behalf of the Henderson County Volunteer Fire Department for radios for each of the departments. We did apply for fiscal year 2020, and unfortunately, our application was not approved. We are wanting to, again, use Vickers Consulting Services to assist us with the application, which will require a fee of $950, which is about fifty, or is $50 per department that will be involved. With speaking with Vickers, they believe we should have a better chance this go-around because they're focusing more on the weight of requesting on the application. For 2020, we requested about, right at $1 million. And this time, we're going to request about $500,000. Due to the size of the county, we think requesting the lesser amount will make us a better fit for the application process. To do so, to decrease to the $500,000, it will require us to decrease some of the equipment that is being requested. And Jared and Jody looked over the equipment and really put some time into what is truly needed to benefit the departments within Henderson County and to benefit the county.
Mr. Vincent?
So last year's grant, we, I don't want to say swung for the fences, but we filled out the mobile portion of it to fit every apparatus in the county, and then we filled up the rest of the grant up to the million-dollar mark or close to it with portables. This time, Jared has taken out the portables and is just focusing strictly on apparatuses. So it'll be mobiles in vehicles. So that's going to cut out a good portion of the funding.
Is part of that due to, we believe that, one of the reasons that we were not awarded was the fact that it was such a large request?
We believe so, yes, sir. I mean, we, the max that we could apply for was $1 million, and I think we applied for $950,000. We were right under the million-dollar mark.
Okay. And by the reduction to half a million, we believe it will make it more palatable or more, will better meet what they are wishing to award out?
Agreed. And with them looking at the age of equipment this year, with all of the fire departments having VHF equipment and us moving to the P-25 system, that's going to basically automatically outdate their equipment.
Okay. Court, questions?
And this grant will just about cover every apparatus in the county?
It will cover every apparatus in the county with the exception of three departments that we don't dispatch for. So Athens, of course, bowed out last year. Seven Points didn't get us the grant information, so there's a few departments on there that did not get us information back, so therefore, they're not part of the grant.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? And our action here today is to approve the request to proceed?
Yes, sir, with your authorization to sign.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Tootley, to approve the applying for the fiscal year 2021 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program with the county judge's authorization to sign.
One question.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know offhand, Jody, what the other department was? You said something about dispatching that we don't dispatch for.
We don't dispatch for three departments in the county. That's Athens, Gun Barrel, and Seven Points. Those are the three departments we do not dispatch for as far as fire departments go.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four is consider and take action to approve a sheriff deputy to attend the Defense Technology Training Center in Monroe, Louisiana. Can Chief with us?
Good morning, Court.
Good morning.
We come to submit this request. We've got a company called Defense Technologies that we get all of our gear from. They're kind of standard as far as less lethal, which is flashbangs, gas, munitions, CS gas, anything like that. But in order to deploy that, you've got to be certified. And in order to teach other people, you've got to be certified by this company. We are already at a point where we are lapsed. The guy that was doing it before is no longer with us, so we've got to get that position filled with somebody that's certified to train. Monroe, Louisiana, is the closest available class for it in the foreseeable future. And we're just requesting to do out-of-state training, out-of-state travel.
Okay. Ms. Lee, do you mind reminding the court on the policy?
Yeah, I'm, according to this, back in the 2009, 2010 kind of era, anytime any out-of-county travel is requested, especially for a conference, that's going to be approved other than...
Law enforcement, yeah.
Extradition, out-of-state travel.
Right, out-of-state travel.
Okay. Questions, comments, Court? Hearing non-entertained motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the request of the Sheriff's Department for a sheriff deputy to attend Defense Technology Training Center in Monroe, Louisiana. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you, Chief. Item five, consider and take action on a request for emergency funding from the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake in the amount of $1,500 a month for 12 months for a total of $18,000. Now, we have representatives here with us today from the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake. If y'all would please come forward.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak today. My name is Lynette Ainsworth, and I'm the board president of the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake and also of the Athens Animal Rescue Shelter. We're here today to talk about some emergency funding for the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake located in Tool. Due to the 2021 shortfalls in our budget through September, our overall shelter increases in operating expenses since COVID-19. Our fundraising money will not sustain the deficit in revenue loss versus increased operating expenses. And I'll go into a little bit more detail about that. We've requested the emergency funding from both Kaufman County, along with Henderson County here today, and other cities that use our services. Just to give you an update on how both shelters are serviced by Henderson County, 43% of the animals that are picked up in Henderson County Animal Control go to the Tool Shelter, and 57% of those animals go to the Athens Animal Rescue Shelter. And I've said in previous conversations and communications that our county needs two shelters, and we need to support both of those shelters, and even so, more now due to the growth that we're seeing in our county. Also, we've seen a large increase this year to last year in the number of animal intake, and obviously, some of that has contributed to the growth in our area. So we've seen quite a bit in both shelters in growth of animal intake. One of the things that we're up against, and we realize that everybody has their budget set. Some of the counties and cities go through the set of the budget in October. And quite honestly, we thought we were going to be able to move forward, not have to go back and ask for any funds. But as we started seeing the retention, also, our pay increases due to the workforce. I think most people realize that in all businesses that are being affected. We pay our kennel check $8.50, and you look at the fast food market, it's paying $14. So we've had a lot of overtime pay that we've been up against. Also, our medical supplies have increased dramatically. Just to give you an idea of spay neuter surgery, we were paying $65 at a local vet here in Athens. That vet now is charging, wants to charge us $142. So we're looking at other avenues because with an adoption fee of $100 to $125, we're already in the water with $142 just on spay neuter. So we have to care, you know, have to care for the animals. Also, decreased revenue. Many people this past summer, as we know, a lot of people went back to work. The adoption expenses were reduced. Some of the things that we want to cover with you is we looked at our budget, and we want to share that with you on those areas that I mentioned, which is labor, medical, and then animal care supplies. So Sharon is going to talk a little bit about that budget.
Good morning, everyone. How are you?
Good morning.
And thank you so much for having us. We really appreciate it. We really enjoy the partnership together. We know we're all in the same, the goal, to protect the animals and to find forever homes for them. So we really, really appreciate all your support. My name is Sharon Banazek, and I'm the director of the Humane Society. But I'm going to pass out our budget update, and this is through September. I know you may have seen one through August. This is a little different than the update.
Thank you.
So as Lynette talked about our budget deficit, from one month to the next, we basically increased by about $7,000 or $8,000. But you'll see that in our labor and our payroll, our difference from our budget to actual was about $37,000. Medical expenses continuously increased, not only the cost, but pure for the fact of the number of animals that come in. Our animal care and food kennel supplies increased about $8,600, putting a deficit in our budget of $60,256. When we look to retain and employ additional employees and try to increase that hourly pay, if we gave every one of our employees $1 more per hour to kind of get us a little bit more competitive and to retain, that looks about $20,000. So our total deficit is about $80,256. So what we're doing is we're asking the counties and the cities to please help us, help us with emergency funding to support our shelter.
Okay. Court, questions, comments?
How many, and I couldn't find it, and I hadn't looked real deep, but I'd like to get an answer on it. But how many counties of Henderson County size run two shelters?
I'm not sure how many other counties, but...
You know how many shelters Smith County has?
No, I couldn't tell you how many. I don't know the answer to that. You know, we look at the number of animals that we bring in and how we house those. So, you know, there are shelters that have a larger capacity. That may be a better answer for you. If we looked at, like, we went to Longview, and they're like double the size of the Athens Shelter, for example. So they may have 120 kennels, and we have 60. So a lot of it is going to depend on the size of the shelter. And both of the shelters are around 65 kennels each. And just a note, too, on the, you know, the Athens Shelter is up against the same thing. If you look at the Athens budget, it's identical as far as medical cost. But we have not had the proper funding in the Tool Shelter, and that is really from all the cities and counties. So it's, that's the problem we have over there.
One thing that is important to keep in mind is that we're truly talking about two different entities. The Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake, we have been under an agreement well, it's since 2008 in some form or another, where we give, we have allocated $20,000 under that agreement for at least the last seven, eight years, if I remember correctly. And even in that discussion of when we had the changeover at the Athens facility, our allotment remained the same. So when, yes, we're funding two facilities in two different organizations, we need to stay focused on the Tool portion as far as this funding request. The Athens facility is of a different beast. When we're talking about, yes, they are under the same challenges, but the request today is specifically the Tyler agreement, I mean, the Tool agreement. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Just because when we see it, we see it as a 300, we collectively spent $346,000 on animal control. Of that $346,000, $20,000 goes to the Tool Shelter. I wanted to, so that we break that down and can really look at it and not get overwhelmed. So please, Court.
Does, does any dogs, say, from, or, I'm sorry, dogs, any animals from the west side or from the east side, are they... or from the east side, are they transported to y'all on the east side, on the west side? I got my directions messed up.
Well...
Like, if a deputy picked up a dog, say, around east side of the courthouse or whatever, all the way to Lake Palestine, would they transport that all the way to your shelter in Tool?
You know, I think it's the location of where it's being picked up. I couldn't tell you the exact line that they decide where to go. You know, we, the Tool Shelter service Maybank, and those cities service and bring animals over. So as far as the Henderson County Animal Control Officer, they typically are going to go to the closest location that they're at.
Do we still handle a good bit of Kaufman County animals at the Tool location?
Yes, there's about a 57%, and then a 40, say 45% between the two counties. And they fund, you know, they fund the majority at the Tool Shelter, just like Henderson County funds the majority at the Athens Shelter.
Do you still have donations coming in pretty often, or have they decreased also?
The donations have done really well, yes. We've been very proud of some of the grants and the donations that we've had over the last year. And unfortunately, we took $20,000 of fundraising money that we just came off of a nice big fundraiser, Whiskers and Wags. $20,000 of that had to go back to operating expenses in Tool. So that has been keeping us, that $80,000 that you saw, that's been keeping us afloat. But it gets to a point where we can't, you know, we don't have any more fundraising funds to supplement that.
Have any of the other cities or counties agreed to the amount they give you? Because this is substantially, well, this is doubling the amount that we now give.
Yes, and I will say that we've already been to Kaufman, and they approved a, and I'll just say, quite a bit more than we're asking for today because, as I mentioned, they, that's their main shelter, too. So, yes, they agreed to that. We've had only one other city that serves us that has not approved it yet. But we've had...
For clarification, you're speaking of the city of Kaufman or the county, or Kaufman County?
Both. The city of Kaufman has given us an increase based on what we asked for. Also, the county of Kaufman, County Kaufman, excuse me, has given us quite a bit of an increase that we asked for because they use that as their main shelter. And they did agree to that.
We all know groceries have gone up. Can you give us a percentage of what pet food and stuff's increased over the last several months?
Do you have any idea?
Budget gone up pretty well.
But, yeah, I mean, in that bucket, you know, that's where we saw the majority of them in that kennel area, and that's where food and even the medical, like I said, those three buckets have gone crazy. And just in the medical, the shots that we have to order, they have gone crazy in the last six months.
I know these numbers, but just for the court's clarification, I think that there was a food drive that made 11,000, that there was 11,000 pounds of dog food and cat food and stuff. Tell the court how long that, how much that lasts for.
You probably know more than about that. Yeah, so that was about 12,000 pounds of food. That'll last us about three months. The animals are...
In one shelter?
One shelter, just for Tool.
I am going to give you a set of numbers, and this is more or less to, for the, those here with us to understand. Per the Sheriff's Department report that we get, animal control has handled 640 animals to the Athens facility and 413 to the Tool facility. When we look at that number, that is just a portion of the number of animals that are actually held, that are handled. If we're at 413, what percentage of that is surrender, individuals not being, animals being brought in by animal control? In other words, I'm trying to get you a feel for, when it comes to Henderson County, is animal control through the Sheriff's Department the largest single driver of animals in the facility? Or is it, shall we call, private surrender or...?
Private surrender is a small percent. So, yes, the animal control is the biggest percent of where the animals come in from. So 43% of animal control goes into the Tool Shelter. So the answer, yes. It's majority of all the animals come in from animal control. Actually, 70%, Sharon's got a, 70% of all the animals come in from animal control. And what we have to do, too, is we have to maintain open kennels because we don't know at any given day, and we've got 12 ACO officers that come in, or cities and counties, so we have to keep those kennels open. There's days that we'll get 30 in a day. And as you can imagine, that just is overwhelming for a shelter. So, yes, we are contracted by counties and cities. That's our first priority, if you will. And then we, as many as we can get out, then we start bringing in on our surrender. So 70% is animal control.
Okay. Court?
And the, it says $18,000 for 12 months, split up to $1,500 a month. Is that from the first of the year, or is that from today, 12-month calendar?
Yeah, from today forward.
So you're talking about $9,000 for this year and $9,000 next year?
For your fiscal year, yeah.
Well, be less than that.
Yeah, be less.
Is something that had to be done through a budget amendment?
I would like to bring our county attorney into the discussion. Our budget cycle being January 1 to December 31, and we are currently operating under an agreement that has these parameters laid out. Is it not in our best interest to amend an agreement that reflects the changes here? Maybe the court does a shorter-term emergency funding, like, two months, to give us time to redo the contract and have that approved, which would take over for the additional funding from there?
I think you can do it. Yeah, you might really. I think you don't have to amend the agreement, but you could do the agreement. I mean, probably, what I would think about that is it would depend more on how we're going to find the funds to cover it, if we're working on it. Obviously, at the end of the year, maybe, you know, probably two months this year, three months this year. And we may be able to find that in the current budget of unused funds. And we could budget and then pay that for this year, next year. Again, what I see that is it's always easier to do at the end of the year because you know exactly how much money you have left over than spending the money that hasn't been funded in the early years. And, you know, that would be the other thing. Maybe that's the end of the agreement, the agreement draft is not looking at it early in the year or next year or so.
And it would also line up with our budget year going forward, is the reason I bring that up.
And the court can either approve that today, you know, we would approve the expenditure, and we'd work out the approval in the future, or the court could just approve for so many months, table in 2021, and then just table the other 2022 after that. I think that would be up to the court.
Okay.
But I do think, my point being, that I think the court could re-improve all today with any good one, too.
Okay. Court?
I have a question. Mine is spaying neutered. Since even, I guess y'all use more than steel?
We use a couple, yes.
I was just wondering if you pros checked others since that went up. But that's still the level.
Yeah, that's why we're still, we're actually still working on that. Yeah, and in Tool, we have a surgery room that we got from a grant a couple of years ago. So trying to, yeah, trying to staff that has been a little difficult, so. And we understand that procedures and costs and everything has gone up since the pandemic. We understand that. And so we have other options that we're looking at, so, yes. Because that's a very important part of our business and our adoption process is to make sure that these animals are spayed or neutered because we just go into the same cycle. So we have aggressively been doing that, and we manage a surgery room in Tool. And again, it's just a matter of finding the funds to get the doctor there and the help and all of that. So it's, that's something that's a very much a priority on our list.
Okay.
Yeah, when it went up, I was like, no, we can't do this. We're not going to use them anymore. So we're looking at other options right now, so.
Comments?
I just think that, you know, back in 2018, when, before I was on the court, this was a high priority. And I think the, the animals that have been saved over the past three, almost three years now is a big feather in their hat. I think that, you know, we're all looking for not knowing what the pandemic held. And I have stated to some of my guys and friends that we're going to see more, people are going to start cutting their finances, and the first thing that's going to be cut is dog food and an animal because of the gas prices are going up and foods going up and that kind of stuff. So I just see this going up. And the work that they've done to save the dogs, to transport, having people taking a personal, writing a personal check for a van to transport dogs to Minnesota, to Maryland, way up north, is just, I mean, they've done it. And I think that we have a problem in Henderson County. Commissioner McCann, like you said before. And this is the only way I know that we can save, save an animal and to help them stay afloat. So I'm, I'm all for it. It's, I...
Well, I look at it, you know, that, you know, we're using taxpayers' money to fund this, but taxpayers are the cause of it. Not all of them, but they're out there because of the people in this county that's not educated on their animals, on to take care of them. Or they take a puppy in because it's a pretty puppy, and then they decide that they don't want it later. And, you know, I think more education and getting people to understand that you don't just take a dog or let a dog breed and have puppies just because you don't want to take care of it. You need to be more responsible and stuff. And I think we need to do something in the county that, some kind of program that gets people where we can get rid of some of this stuff. We know we'll never end it, but it needs to be under a little more control. You always got to control things, and it's out of control right now, so.
I hope people realize how much money we're spending to take care of these animals. And I don't know how you don't spend it, you know. I don't know how you don't. But I don't think we're throwing money away. I don't think y'all are being frivolous with the money. I think we're taking care of the animals the way they have to be taken care of. That we're trying to do it on the best budget that we can do it on. But it's a mile of animals out there that are being abandoned or just turned loose or just running wild. And we see it everywhere. And I don't know the fix. I don't know if y'all know the fix.
You know what's interesting?
Throwing money at it isn't a fix. We figured that out already. And I don't know how much money the other counties and the cities are putting in. I know how much money Henderson County is putting in. It's a tremendous amount. That we're spending, taking care of people's animals that they won't go down there and spay and neuter for $114. So the rest of the county's got to spend $300 and could be up to $60,000 now. And I don't know what Kaufman County's spending over at Tool. And I don't know what Gumbert's spending. I don't, you know, it's a tremendous amount of money. And I don't know how to fix it. But throwing money at it isn't fixing it. But how do you not give the money that you add for? Because then, you know, you're on a whole different level when you're not taking care of the animals. So it puts us in a spot of having to do something that we really don't want to do, but that we nearly have to do. Because people won't take care of their animals. They won't go down there and spend the $114 to have them spayed. And I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm not against giving you what y'all are asking for, but I don't know how we fix it. And we can't continue on down the road of just, I don't know. It's got to be an end somewhere, but I don't know what it is. I look at the looks on y'all faces. I don't think y'all know what it is.
Yeah, and Commissioner, now what's interesting is really this year, we've seen so many hoarding cases. In Henderson County, I mean, we've seen, I think your numbers for this past month of October, I mean, was like 65 animals. That's tremendous. And so we, as a community, I totally agree, as a community, and how do we educate and how do we understand who is starting that process of 35 animals in their home or 50? Athens has seen the same thing, Athens Animal Rescue. So it's frustrating. It is so frustrating. And you're right, we're not frivolous with our money. We, I mean, we are very prudent in what we do. Every single day, we're on a very strict budget. A lot of us drive vans for transport. A lot of us get up at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning and are gone 24 hours driving to save these animals, and a lot of folks are volunteers, too. So I totally understand what you're saying, and it's frustrating. It's just at a point where we need help.
Any other comments? If the court will entertain, for myself, what I would like to do so that we do not cross budget years and we line it up as it should be. If we do move forward, I would like to see the court move forward with a two-month emergency funding and us have a contract in place very quickly, either sometime in December or early January, so we can actually have under contract the new, a new dollar amount if we so choose to do that. I think that that is truly the most prudent way to move forward. We understand the funding crisis that you are receiving. So getting this two months' worth approved today, if the court so wishes, will give us time to do it the proper way through contracting for the next budget year. That's the way I would like to see it move forward. Now, the court may have a different opinion than that, and that's fine. But for myself, I'd feel more comfortable with that approach.
So we, if we so choose, $3,000 for 2021, and then we'll come back on 1st December or 1st of January?
As long as we have enough, we should have enough time to update the contract or the agreement, really, is what it is, the agreement, to reflect any future changes. And then that way, it sets well with our finance department as far as making the appropriate amendments. That way, we aren't moving, making budget amendments in a year that's not even open yet, so that we can handle it in that, out of the two different pots of money, as an easier way of saying. Any further comments? And Commissioner, I agree completely with what you're saying. It's a lack of individual responsibility, which is what's killing our entire society to begin with. I mean, I agree.
And I hate for the county government or government period to have to come in and tell people how many animals they can own. I'm not for that.
Right.
But there's got to be a time when you start spending the kind of money we're spending that you can't have 35 dogs in the house with you, and then 34 of them end up at shelter. I mean, I don't know. I don't know the fix to it. I don't think anybody in Texas knows the fix to it because they have a problem all over, obviously, in Henderson County.
Any other comments?
I'll move through the two-month emergency spending and then rework the agreement.
Second, in the year.
Okay. I have a motion made by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Tully, to approve the request for additional emergency funding for the Cedar Creek Lake Humane Society or the Humane Society of Cedar Creek the Humane Society of Cedar Creek Lake in the amount of $3,000. Any further comments? I'm leaving the portion out due to, we'll, we'll pick that up on the future contract. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor? Item passes.
Thank you.
Ladies, thank you very much and do wish to recognize y'all's efforts.
Thank you.
Because it has, it is a labor level on y'all's part, truly is.
It's never been any less.
All right. Let me back up here. All right. Item six, consider and take action on entering into a contract for the sale of a .906 acre tract of land located at 12103 FM 315 South in Pointer, Texas, 75782, to the city of Pointer. And for a little background on this, this is the old...
JP office.
JP office, Commissioner?
Yes, Court, the city of Pointer approached the county about purchasing this .906 acre tract and it also does have the Pointer JP, old Pointer JP four building located on it. A little history on it, the JP had been there quite a while and, and we built a new JP center last year, completed last year in LaRue. So, the county's not using this anymore and the, and we'd always said that if the county ever got ready to sell it, that we would offer it back to the city of Pointer, would get, would be able to try to buy it back. The intentions were that when the county bought it, we were going to build the JP office in LaRue, I mean, in Pointer, at that site, tear the old building down and build a new one. Well, after redistricting in 2011, that kind of put LaRue more of the central location of the JP. So, we found land there in the city of LaRue and purchased that. So, they made an offer of $10,000 for it. The building is pretty dilapidated during the winter storm, had a lot of flooding in there, water pipe broke, ruined the floor, a lot of sheet rock molding in the base and stuff in there. And, and I think maybe their intentions, if they purchase it, is just tearing the building down. And, but they've made an offer and want to get, move into contract with us if we approve this today. And I think we did receive some insurance damage money on it from our insurance company too, and we haven't upgraded or repaired any of those repairs, so.
Questions? I will say that this location had been the JP four site for well over 25 years. Judge Tarrant used that location most extensively for the longest period of time and there's been several successions since then.
I think we rented it until 2009 and we purchased the building.
We did. We rented the building from the city of Pointer up until 2008 or '09 when we did purchase the property with the intention of building, as, as Commissioner stated, the new JP building there. But as time went on and that did not come to fruition for all sorts of reasons, actually the city of Pointer came to us at Commissioner's Court, not long after that, about 2010, and requested, hey, we want to buy it back if y'all aren't willing to build. And we made a, a verbal gentleman's agreement then that they would have the first right of refusal on the property when we did decide to sell it. And this is honoring that agreement.
This property bucks up to their city park also, doesn't it?
It's in close proximity. It's across...
No, it's right next to it. Actually, this track was cut out of their city park, their four-acre track. And the, when the county bought it, they cut that out of their four-acre track and we got the .906.
Okay. Any other questions? It's an old Haddock block building. I don't know how old it is.
1938, I think.
1938. We've got a lot of good use out of it.
Will this money be split four ways?
No, it will not.
I just asked a question.
I think it was general fund that was used to pay for it and general fund unto which it shall return. Any other comments? Commissioner?
There's no other questions. I'd like to make a motion to enter into a contract for the sale of a .906 acre tract of land at 12103 FM 315 South, Pointer, Texas, 75782, to the city of Pointer.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner McCann, to approve the sale of land as described by, as described to the city of Pointer. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Thank you, Court. And thank you, city of Pointer, for being such a good partner over these years, especially in this issue, because they actually depended on the rental income as part of their operating budget when we bought it.
As of right now, you know, we're sitting there with electricity and water bills and stuff and the bill is not being used. And I think the minimum water bill on it is higher than what we're paying at JP 4 in LaRue right now.
Water is the new gold. All right. Item seven, consider and take action to approve transferring a desk and chair from inventory to precinct two. Ms. Lee?
Yes, they, they went over there to check out the inventory, found some things they could use and they just need approval from the court.
Commissioner?
Yes, we hired a part-time clerk and we're needing a desk and a chair for, for her off, for her office inside my office.
Court, questions? Entertaining motion?
Judge, I'd like to approve a transferring of a desk and a chair from inventory to precinct two.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve transferring a desk and chair from inventory to precinct two, Roben Bridge. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes.
Judge?
Yes, sir.
I do have one question on that previous item. That, that is, if we can get that in a minute, it's with the judge's authorization to sign on that.
On the city of Pointer?
On the city of Pointer, yes, sir.
Duly noted. Item eight, consider and take action to reappoint two members of the Henderson County Service District Number Two Board of Directors for a term which will expire December 31, 2023, located in precinct two. Commissioner?
Yes, Judge, there's two board members that's, terms are up at the end of the year and they have both asked to be reappointed to ESD two.
Questions for the Commissioner? I will state that Mr. Chet Martyr's been a longtime member and Mr. Vinsick was just recently appointed about a year ago, if I remember correctly. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, to fill out a term.
Yes.
Any further comments or discussion? Entertaining motion?
Judge, I move that we reappoint Chet Martyr and Jody Vinsick to the ESD Number Two Board of Directors for a term which will expire December 31, 2023.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Tulley, second by Commissioner Spivey, to reappoint Chet Martyr and Jody Vinsick to ESD two Board of Directors for a term to expire December 31 of 2023. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Item 10, receive financial reports, and we do have these. These are the combined JP financials for the last month, includes all five JPs. These are available for viewing in the county clerk's office following the meeting if anyone wishes to inspect them.
We skipped number nine.
Did I skip number nine? I apologize. We'll move back to number nine. Consider and take action to accept Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Seven fiscal year 2020 financial statement for filing purposes only, located in precinct three. Commissioner?
This is the financial statements that have to be turned in. They have their affidavit accompanying this paperwork and it looks to me like everything is in order.
Questions or comments?
Here, now, I move we accept Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Seven's fiscal year 2020 financial statement for filing purposes only.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Richardson, to accept the Henderson County Emergency Service District Number Seven fiscal year 2020 financial statement for filing purposes only. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Item 10, of course, was the combined JP financials. Again, they are available for viewing after court in the county clerk's office. Item 11, is consider and take action on payroll distributions and accounts cash sheet. We have none. Item 12 is consider and take action on submitted contracts. There are none. 13, consider and take action on requests for right-of-way permits. Have none. Item 14 is consider and take action on submitted budget amendments. We have none. And item 15 is consider and take action on payment of bills. Ms. Carpenter?
In the amount of $241,230.76.
Commissioner Spivey, questions?
I have no questions, Judge.
Commissioner Tulley?
I have none, Judge.
Commissioner McCann?
No.
Commissioner Richardson?
No questions, Judge.
Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bills fiscal year 2021 in the amount of $241,230.76.
I'll second his motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Spivey, to approve the bills in the amount of $241,230.76. All those in favor of the motion? Item 16 is consider and take action on submitted plaits.
I have two seconds one and I'll be there.
Commissioner?
Yes, Court, there's a gentleman that was replating this lot. I believe he's here, but Ms. Joy Kimbrough had wanted to disclose that it is close to the floodplain. I have attached that in the backup, but the floodplain is not on this lot and they're just replating the two, the one lot to two. One lot, one of them's going to be 4.05 acres and one's going to be one acre. And they do have the septic on the one acre.
Questions for the Commissioner?
I do have one question. I, I was looking at this lot on the CAD and, and it showed to already be platted like this at the Henderson County appraisal district.
That's what they said too. They already have addresses, but Tyler told them that they needed to bring it through the court.
Yeah, and I noticed that the, on, on here, you've got 49A and 49B and I think on the CAD, it was 49 and 49A or something like that. So, so we're going to make this official today and get it corrected on the CAD, I guess, on what the survey says.
Yes, sir. I didn't realize it was already mapped on the CAD, but they, they knew that they already had two addresses for it, but Tyler told them they needed to bring it through the court.
Well, this will clean up any uncertainty about the property through the action taken here today.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Entertaining motion?
I'd like to make a motion to replat lot 49 into lot 49A, that's 4.05 acres, and lot 49B with one acre and located in precinct one for filing purposes only.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Tulley, to approve the replat of lot 49 in Spring Valley Acres, creating lot 49A and 49B for filing purposes only. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Item 17 is open and consider bids. We have no bids. And then item 18 is convene into executive session pursuant to the Texas Government Code Section 551.071 to discuss legal matters with counsel specifically to discuss status of opioid litigation and potential settlement agreement in opioid litigation involving Henderson County. Court, you want to move into executive session around, what, 10:10? What's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to move into executive session at 10:10.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Tulley, to move into executive, to move into executive session at 10:10 a.m. All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. All right.[1511.26]
Okay. The time is 11:00 a.m. Can we have a motion to move back into, to reconvene into open session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Spivey, second by Commissioner Richardson to move back into open session where we are to consider and take action on matters discussed during executive session. Court, we met with our attorneys to discuss the opioid litigation. Is, are there, is there an action we wish to take?
I'd like to move that we authorize approval of the proposed Janson, Texas statewide opioid settlement agreement.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Commissioner McCam, second by Commissioner Spivey to approve the order authorizing the approval of, of the proposed Janson, Texas statewide opioid settlement agreement. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes, and I believe there is a second item.
Judge, I move that we give the county judge approval to sign the Texas subdivision election and release form.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Spivey, second, uh, excuse me. Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Richardson to approve the Texas subdivision and subdivision election and release form with the county judge's authorization to sign. Are there any other comments? All those in favor of the motion? Item passes. Item number 20, consider and take action to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Thule, second by Commissioner Spivey. All those in favor? Passes, thank you very much. What are you giggling about? All the time. Okay, here is this.